Guys, all set? Yes, that does. All right. Well, good evening, everyone. Welcome to our planning and zoning program for Morgan County. We invite your spirit to attend us this night that as we discuss the business of the county that we may be able to do it with an enlightened mind and in the interest of helping people with what they would like to do. We're grateful for all we have. We recognize your hand in our lives and pray that it may continue. And we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we've got a short agenda. I'm assuming everyone's had a chance to review. Would you like to take a motion on it?
So moved.
A motion to approve the agenda. Do we have a second?
A second.
A second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any conflicts of interest for any members of the planning commission for anything on the agenda for tonight? Having seen none, we're going to move on to a period or, yeah, a public comment. This is our public comment time. I'm just checking here. We do have a continuation of a public hearing for item number six, which is the rezone. So you'll have an opportunity to talk to that specifically. But if you got any other comments now, we'd just like to open up the floor for anybody at the beginning of our meetings for anything else. The only thing you can speak to on the agenda are public hearing things, so that's the one that's on here. So if you want to talk about anything, the weather, how great the county is, the economy, anybody? No? Okay. Okay, so having seen no one, we're going to go out of public comment and we're going to move on to item number s-
Do you have a comment? Do you guys have a comment? You gave her the eye.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. No?
No, it's very observant, very observant. Thank you.
Have more questions than comments. Does that work?
You know, for something on the agenda tonight or something else?
Probably something else.
I would-
You could make public comment and then we could address it.
Yeah, so what, this is very interesting and it's nice when there's a few people here. It's normally feast or famine here. There's, you know, one person or 400 with pitchforks. No, I'm just teasing. But so if it's packed, it's really hard to have dialogue. And so we don't really have dialogue because we have to get through the stuff that the applicants have paid for on the agenda and that. So what we do is we open up for public comments and if you guys have questions, then what we do is we'll write them down and then when we get to business and questions for staff, we'll talk about it ourselves and if you're still here, then we'll have some more time after the agenda is done to kind of dialogue with you and maybe get some more information or whatever. Does that sound good? So if you want to make some comments now, that'd be good. It gets on the public record and then we can talk about it if you do have something that you want to discuss.
Sure.
Yeah, don't be afraid. We're all citizens here. If you could come up to the mic, just so the reason is, it's a public meeting, so there's a camera and no pressure. There's a camera and a microphone. If you just tell us who your name is, your name and where you live.
Sure, my name's Brett Boss. I live in the Red Rock neighborhood. Do you want the full address?
No, no, you're good. Just so we know who, you know, kind of general idea where people are at.
Just had a question more about the Como Springs expansion. I keep hearing, we heard different things about it being in planning or being on the county and it seems like it's bounced in between and so just wanted to know where that was.
Okay. Great question. Hang out, will, you want to just address it and honestly doesn't have to hang out or?
Yeah, Como Springs was the county commission, the vice week group two weeks ago. It was remanded back from planning commission. Planning commission meeting is set for September 27th. Okay. Thanks. So it'll be back here on Monday. Okay, thanks.
You're welcome. Anybody else?
So, I guess this is the place to ask, huh?
Yeah. The camera's behind you, don't worry about it.
My name is Zach Butters. I live over there in Richville.
Yeah.
So we have, I think they came to the county planning commission, whoever, I'm not sure, but anyway, there's, I think they got approval for having, I think it was for crop dusting, but they have planes and stuff over in that area. I was just curious if, what the details are as far as what they asked for in getting approved.
I don't know anything about that.
They haven't come to us.
Yeah, we haven't had anyone come to us for that.
So would that be something?
You can call our office tomorrow and ask more specifically and we can look into it. But there's nothing official. So.
All right, thank you.
This is great, people coming out and dialoguing, almost like we're united. Anybody else? Anything? No? Okay. So we'll move from public comment on title, oh, every time, no, just teasing.
I'm Shelley Page and I'm from Richville Lane Two.
Yep.
Richville area. I too have been concerned about the small airplanes, so that's an issue that I'm concerned with, they fly over our house and taking off and landing.
This is the unofficial airstrip?
Yeah.
I think we received some complaints about that. I need to send the code force.
Okay.
I have to have a chance to get that.
And then, you know, there's also the road that was carved going up the road on South Morgan Valley Drive, going up the hill. I was just wondering-
Same area? Or this Wasatch Peaks or is this the unofficial?
No, no.
This is Richville.
It's Richville.
This is the unofficial.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, no, this isn't Wasatch Peaks. It's right at the end of Richville Lane, the west end, sort of.
Okay.
And it's like right across from Zach's house.
Okay.
It's a big road and a lot of dirt was moved. And I was just wondering if they're required to rehab the, you know, the big scar on the mountain? And I didn't know if, I'm not trying to be a bad neighbor.
Oh, no. No, you're fine. This is the place to come ask questions.
So I just had concerns about the big, like double lane roads going up the mountain and around and I'm just interested in why that happened and I just want, I'm hoping there's not a subdivision going on up there.
Gotcha. Yeah, so we don't have any applications or anything before us as a planning commission?
With an excavation permit?
To go along with her comment with that is, do they have approval and permit to be able to do that though themselves or is it official?
Yeah, it's Walrunt's.
That's not something that these guys would necessarily know because it's even administrative or legislative action. It's a staff level. So that would be something you can ask us if you want to comment tomorrow or give me a call, I can answer all those questions for you.
Okay, that sounds right.
Or you can ask yours. Huh?
Remind me your name.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, you're welcome. You don't have to leave either. I mean, you can, this is a-
It's hard when you don't know. I'm trying to learn the rules.
No, you know what? Eight, oh my gosh, almost eight years ago, I stood right there and volunteered to do this and I knew zero about planning and development. So I wanted to learn what the process was because it's weird. You come up here and there's a bunch of people sitting up here and you're like, what is this? Is it the court of law or something? No, we're co-citizens. We're not paid employees. We're volunteers that serve to represent different districts and end your interests. So literally, like our, that's our job is to help you get answers to your questions and stuff. But when we have our meetings, what happens here is people, they make application and when certain things hit a point where it has to come to the commission or either the planning or the county commissioner, the county commissioner is the people you elected and they appoint us to do the planning and development stuff. So most questions staff will answer, but this is kind of where we hash out when someone makes an application. If someone had made an application for a subdivision or made an application for something that required our oversight and, you know, investigation or whatever, that's where it comes here. But so most of your general questions, just call the number and they can help you with that. And of course, you're always welcome to come out here and watch government unfold before you the way it was designed to do, right? We're just representing each other and talking about stuff, so.
I appreciate government.
Yeah, you're welcome. We're not government, we're just appointed.
You look official.
It does look official, it feels official.
It is.
It is official. Okay. Anybody else? Sure you haven't said anything. Do you want? Okay. Okay, we're going to go out of public comment. We're going to go on to our legislative discussion for item number six, which is discussion decision Riddlesbok rezone. So this came before us, before?
July 14th.
July 14th. I'm trying to give you a break tonight. We had some specific concerns about how much acreage they were bringing in. They asked to postpone it and they addressed the, well, they addressed what we asked them for, right? Which was essentially, initially it was going to leave-
Less than 20 acres.
Less than 20 acres.
In A-20.
In A-20. And it's okay if none of this makes sense. Eventually it does, for some reason.
Yeah, they can come up and do that.
Yeah.
Did you want me to give you the key?
You don't have to. See, you made me. I gotta buy doughnuts now. Yeah, that's the business rule, right? No, you don't have to, I just, was there anything that we, anything that we need to discuss that's not in the packet? They, we asked them to make the changes, they made the changes, now they're coming back.
Yeah, that's pretty much it. They've changed their request to rezone a portion of their property back to A-20 and then the remaining portion to RR5, so they'll have 20 acres in the A-20 and the remaining in the RR5. They've met all of our requirements, they're, it's in line with the general plan and the staff is recommending approval.
Any questions?
Will we go into public hearing?
Okay.
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So we're now in public hearing. For those that aren't here all the time, it's kind of weird, but there's legislative and administrative things, I take the time, we have time. There's legislative and administrative topics that we discuss. When it's a legislative item, by Utah law, we have to open it up officially to a public hearing. So for this, this is a legislative discussion for a rezone application. So we're now in what we call public hearings specifically for this thing. So if anybody has any specific comments for this rezone application, now is the time to come up and get on the record? No? Having seen none?
I move we've got a public hearing.
Motion to go out of hearing?
Second.
And a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we're now out of public hearing for this. Any further discussion with planning commission? Nope? Ready for a motion if you are?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we forward a positive recommendation to the county commission for the Riddlesbok rezone map amendment, application 22.042, changing 10.58 acres from A-20 to RR5 and three acres from RR5 to A-20, based on the findings listed in the staff report dated August 25, 2022.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second for that?
Call second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, so on to item number seven. This one's going to be postponed, so if someone, any discussion on this before either postponed?
Oh, why is it being postponed?
They're still waiting for UDOT and their approval or denial.
I thought they only got approved by UDOT. They just want, you just want them to look at it again.
They did not get approved.
Oh, okay.
So my discussion with UDOT is that UDOT was still reviewing it. They have made a decision yet because it's a very political issue. Read into that what you will.
I think they were under the assumption that they were approved. Someone said, oh, yeah, you're good. But it hadn't been official. Yeah.
Yeah, so that'll be official letter from UDOT.
Mr. Chair, I move we postpone Riverbend Estate's small subdivision until our September 22nd, 2022 meeting.
Second.
No motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, on to our work session area plan update. It looks like we got quite a few applications here.
Before we get into that, I'll give you an update on the Mountain Green Peterson area plan. So I spoke with Lance Terrell. He says that they have been working on a market study, an additional, there's a market study, there's an additional study that they've been working on. They're contracting with Blue Spider to do a mail out survey of some sort. They've done some land use things and a few other items. I've asked for copies of everything that they've done and he says that they were given a grant of $130,000 and they spent, there's 78,000 left. So they've spent $15,200. They have not started writing the area plan. So just giving you a heads up.
So I guess hopefully they get all the information to give to us so we can put an area plan together?
Hopefully they are really fast writers.
What you want to bet it? It's regurgitating the debt.
It's for Peterson, Mountain Green, so.
They haven't been started.
I know.
I haven't heard anything, eh? Nothing.
No, I asked Josh, that's, that's me.
Hopefully by next meeting I should have copies of everything that they've done as well as a list of what they've worked on.
So who, are they contracted with the county?
I don't think they're contracted with the county. They're contracted with Wasatch.
Wasatch Front.
Regional councilor.
Do we have a record for that anymore?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The county commission has two or three records and stuff.
Yeah, I wonder if they could, because there should be some kind of contract oversight. There should be a core, the core for that contract, just to kind of, just gauge if it's progressing. Yeah, that'd be the person.
That's the commission chair. I know Mike Newton, you see the chairs on it.
Good deal. Yeah, maybe we can ask Mike and he can look into it.
Here, we have had some new applications for the area plan since I sent you guys the packet. So.
Pass them down to the area.
Hopefully for Corden.
There have been two for Corden.
Yeah.
And then four, sorry, five for the Richville, Porterville area plan.
Who's this Zach Butters guy?
And then there were two for Milton.
Are there multiple? Are these are just, okay, just single copy of all these, right?
Yeah. Yeah, I'll email them out to you guys, I just haven't had a chance to get that done yet.
Let me just take a look here. Milton, Richville. This one's Milton as well. Corden. Shout out to Corden.
So I need an official word on the application process because Debbie told me one thing and then Bailey told me another.
So we printed out, did you print out blank applications?
Yeah.
And she's written the names on them.
Oh, okay, okay.
Do they want the people to?
I would like the people who are wanting to be on there to fill it out themselves so there's no question.
So how about we, I haven't really picked a number, we've got five, like-
Pick a number.
We could seven.
Most areas have four to five people. Enterprise has one.
Yeah, that's the problem, I guess. We've got two more for-
Isn't that Chris's problem?
What is he doing? Chris, what do you, oh. Well, there's five around Valley and maybe we can start there and just say, okay, well if we have our team.
Yeah, we can do between five to seven if you want. If there's some areas that want more, then they can have up to seven.
Well, I hate to keep kicking this can down the road, but maybe-
Get started.
Maybe we, man, maybe we can get started or maybe we can just pass these applications, make sure we get the applications to the individual people. So, you know, Steve wants to look at all these applications for Richville, Porterville. There has to be a cutoff at some point, right?
Yes.
So you're wealthy, you've got plenty of people on your team.
Plus the two that we had in our packet.
Yeah, plus the two in the packet.
So I should give-
Corden's got five now. There's two more for you.
I should be seven or at least for me then.
You're way, you're doing it on this way over.
See, you have a total of nine people.
Nine?
No.
You guys having a problem with me using all nine?
Your team, yeah? And then I guess we can give these to Shane for Milton.
So, Mr. Chairman-
Yeah, two more Milton's.
So I understand the scope. We're tasked with going back over to the old area plan and making sure it's still viable, whether we want to make any changes to it, correct?
Yeah, the step one, correct. The step one was to pick the team. Step two would be for us to get together and figure out, hey, this is our game plan. This is the support you're going to get from the rest of our, you know, this team and staff. And then we'll, then we'll start. But right now, we don't even have teams, so I think we're closer today than we have been. Yeah. So how about, how about we do this? Just a suggestion.
My team's going to be ready by next week.
Your team's going to be ready next week. You've got more applications, Dustin, you do as well. And then Shane's got two more. And then poor Chris, we got to do something to get the word out to Enterprise to get some folks to volunteer for their destiny.
Can I ask a question real quick?
Yeah.
I didn't find out about it until one day I came to Chris's return. I talked to Bailey here and she gave me an application, but how do you guys advertise? Because I didn't know about it.
As many places as we can, signs.
What about like Morgan Moms or something?
I think I got, got a Morgan Moms, didn't it?
Did any, I didn't post them because it's, it's been posted on Facebook, we have Morgan County Planning Page.
And there's also yellow signs that have been-
So there's a link to Morgan Moms, Morgan County Planning Page? So we don't get into that, they just, everything should auto-post there? So it did go there, surprisingly.
I mean, I'm just saying, just to get the word out in other areas.
Yeah, we've been trying for two months now to try and get folks up, so, I mean, yeah, I don't know. I don't know what else we can do.
There's really not much because the newspaper doesn't circulate a paper copy anymore, so.
Just the online.
Yeah, and we already do online, so then we did the signs.
And when's the cutoff for being official on this, for other areas?
We don't know yet. We're trying, really, we want to wait.
We want to have teams.
We want to have good, healthy teams to have the best resolution into the issues that we can and so, but we don't also, we also don't want to slow lick this thing for another year. So it, there is no real cutoff. We're just, we're just going to keep trying to get as many teams together.
The sooner the better.
The sooner the better, yeah.
And you said there's a link on, what did you say?
Morgan County Planning Department.
You guys might be good now because you've got nine people. That's a pretty good, pretty good number.
Well, I was just thinking for the other areas that still need some-
Enterprise is what we need. Do you know anybody in Enterprise that can get the word out and just, you know, it's not, it's super time consuming, but it has to be kind of a brain trust of people to say, hey, what do we want our community to look like in the future? How do we want, you know, our growth to happen and where? Or none, or what?
It should be a realistic view.
Yeah.
Your community is going to grow, so you need to look for that and allow for some areas that should grow, be commercial, whatever.
Yeah.
Because if the community's not growing, it's done.
Yeah, for sure. So where are we at? One more week? We've made, I think we've made more progress, so I feel better. We've made significant progress, so I'm comfortable kicking it to the next meeting.
Do you just want to, like, start contacting everybody and we can still accept applications that come in?
Yeah.
Yeah, the only, like I said, the only one that we're, I think, short on-
Really short on is-
Is Enterprise.
Enterprise, yeah.
But there are, I mean-
Chris could get his kids out there and do that.
Yeah, call some people.
Okay.
Enterprise and Corden could use a couple more, but if you've got-
Yeah, you're up to five now, right?
Four technically.
Me? Uh, Corden, sorry.
No, there's actually only four applications. One who was a double, that was already in here. But I know someone else who was putting one in, he just hasn't put it in yet.
Okay.
So there is, I think there is five for sure anyways.
So, yeah, that's, everybody comfortable till the next meeting? Just keep progressing?
Yeah. Do we have a list of steps that we have to, are we making this up as we want to do it?
Yeah.
So I can, when I get my, next week, if I've got my nine, I can start the process.
Yeah. Yeah, Josh would be, you know, the starting point. Hey, what do I do next?
All right.
Josh did create kind of a step-by-step what you should do and was in one of the packets.
He has, but, like, the second meeting.
It was July 28th.
So.
Sorry, Josh, I already lost it. Can you?
I had forgotten about that, so to be fair.
Mustn't have been very good.
No, it was.
It was good.
Because my, remember my comment was, this is unbelievable. You're awesome. This is going to work out great. And then I forgot about it.
Oh, it's important.
Oh, it wasn't.
Yeah.
Sorry, it's important to you.
How can we trust you?
Neither I did.
I did neither.
Tell me the name of the person I need to contact if I wanted to reserve a room. I can't remember who you told me.
Reserve a room here?
Yeah, somewhere here in the county.
You can do it online.
Who is it though? Do you know?
If it's the auditorium, it's going to be the extension office, I believe. I'll double check on it if-
Who's over that? I don't even know.
The Utah State Extension Office.
Oh, okay.
And you shouldn't have to pay to rent since it's county, so make sure you mention that.
So if you go to the county website, you should be contacted.
Okay, all right.
And if you want, you can ask me and I can contact them to reserve it.
Okay.
Thanks, Ben. Pretty sure that's where we're headed. Okay, so we got a good way forward? Okay. Okay. Item nine, business staff questions. I feel like you got the Kumble Springs question answered.
Why was, why is it coming back? Why is it coming back?
I've got a bunch of emails about the road.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why it was remanded. It was remanded for you to determine an amount for a bond, an assurance bond.
In our code, it was very specific.
Yeah, it's kind of strange, but in the conditional use permit section of our code, it had for recreational beauty parks, it has a specific assurance bond that they have provided the county to ensure maintenance and improvement of the internal roads, and honestly, I don't know if we, we in the county wanna really get into improvements on private property. I mean, how long are we gonna hold that assurance bond before we have, before we give it back?
Well, how do we decide what the amount is?
Well, that's another good question, because I don't think it's really defined in our code, but typically assurance bonds are calculated by the county engineer, and then, so I'm not really sure how we would go about calculating that in the first place, because of the scope of the project. Do we do it just for phase one now, and ask for phase two when they come in for phase nine? Yeah, so there's a lot of questions. You can determine that the county will accept a zero assurance bond, because you don't wanna deal with maintaining private, private infrastructure on private property, since we're an agency as opposed to private agency. So I think that's up to you to decide.
Don't.
The concerns for the community, I guess, are for the hundred south. Again, can't really go into it discussing, because it's not agenda.
Sure.
But we'll include all the emails and comments that we received too, in the packet, so you can read through it. We'll make sure you get the packet early, so you have time.
Don't, just for a point of clarification, from my own personal education, don't we work with people all the time and trying to control how they develop their properties? Like Wasatch Peaks, for example, we greet roads, the makeup of the roads, sewer systems.
That's true, but those are gonna be roads. There's gonna be a sewer system and a water system, and then they're gonna be privately maintained, so while we will inspect them, and they do submit an assurance bond for the roads and the infrastructure, this is something completely different. We're talking about internal driveways, we're talking about landscaping, parking, and things like that, which assurance bonds typically are.
I guess I don't know what an assurance bond is. They pay us money to hold.
So if you're a developer and typically, let's say you're developing a subdivision, and you're required to put in half-street improvements, the street fronting your project, plus the internal streets, then you would put up an assurance bond for the total amount of what those improvements would cost, plus 10% warranty. That total amount is calculated by the county engineer, and then any of that infrastructure that you, the developer, put in, we would refund that portion of the assurance bond back to you before we would actually, so after it's recorded, the assurance bond is recorded. Any infrastructure you put in before it's recorded, you don't actually have to post the assurance bond for that amount, but if you post for that amount and you put in additional infrastructure, then we would refund, continue to refund to you the amount that you're putting in. It's basically to protect the county, so if a subdivision's approved and it shows streets that should be put in, if the developer doesn't do it, walks away, or whatever.
He would have money.
Then we, the county, would cash the assurance bond and put the improvements in ourselves.
Gotcha. Okay.
Yeah, and I guess one of the other differences is the difference between a conditional use permit and a development agreement for a subdivision.
Well, development agreement is part of the entitlement process. Here in Utah, the conditional use permits are administrative, they're checklist, check of.
And with the guarantee, it doesn't state that it's refunded, so it'd be like permanently held versus them paying us and then us slowly refunding it to them as they get it inspected and approved.
That's under a development agreement, you said?
That's under the conditional use permit for the guarantee.
Okay. I guess we'll talk more about it later.
Yeah, I don't believe we can technically hold it in perpetuity, I don't think we have that ability.
Yeah, that would be, anyway, county attorney would be, I'm sure, have an opinion on this.
Well, assurance bonds and letters of credit typically have an expiration date, between one and two years, so.
Well, if they're not done by the two years, does it have a natural extension on that?
No, you have to, you have to physically request a new extension from the developer to that, that, that letter of credit with that assurance bond. They go to the bank and they have to get it again. It just doesn't automatically renew.
So if I understand you correctly, you're saying if they're not done in two years, you still have to refund their assurance bond, even if they're not done with their project?
No, it expires completely, and then we don't have access to those funds at all, so we would have to constantly maintain and monitor, one, the assurance bonds, make sure they never expire, meaning we have to get them to go and get another one, to submit to us in replacement of the old one. It's logistically a nightmare, to be perfectly honest, so.
Something new for us. I have, yeah, we've never had this discussion before for conditional use permit, that I don't know.
Yeah, I remember the county enforcing that before, they came down and said, we will have bonds for everything that people construct. How long ago was that? I know it's not a figment of my imagination, I remember when the county should did that.
Yeah, maybe it was like nine years ago or something?
Yeah, it could be.
Yeah. Well, thanks for the read ahead. Anything else for us?
Well, next planning commission, we're gonna have a discussion item. The developers of Nine Springs wanted to kind of give you a brief discussion of their project coming up, and invite you to a tour of all of the coffee shops.
Okay. Been a while since we did one of those.
Where's Nine Springs? Going on three years?
Up Trappers.
Snow Basin.
Behind Highlands. Up around there.
There was also that the county commission wants us to look at the code as far as expiration of final plat for subdivisions, rather than six months to extend, maybe up to two years.
All right, I'll add that to the list.
Add that to the list.
Did that come out of the last meeting?
Yeah. With supply change, it's been difficult to finish the infrastructure in six months, and then, they're trying to do the infrastructure before they record, so they don't have to bond.
Well, it reduces the.
Yeah, it's one person.
The more you complete before you're.
Yeah.
The less.
No?
Actually, I have a question, did, did anything ever come of golf course deal? Did you ever hear anything from them?
Round Valley?
Which golf was?
Round Valley.
Not in a while.
What was the name of that subdivision?
Urbala.
Urbala?
Yeah, that's what they had originally planned.
Originally, yeah.
But it's changed.
I've heard rumors that they've been doing testing up there last year, herb tests and things like that, but, those are rumors, that's all.
Yeah.
Just curious, who were you referring to?
Oh, there was a group of people who bought Round Valley, and they had plans to develop it into, originally it was like.
Five hundred?
Five.
Yeah, it started here and then started scoping down.
Yeah.
But they do have concept, they got that, because they were required, they were running out of time.
Their concept, it's going to expire soon, no?
Well, they could ask for an extent, I think, an extension, yeah.
They invested a lot of money in that bridge over there, I was just curious.
One year, and then you.
One year of concept.
And one extension, one-year extension.
I think they're.
It's been closed, but they haven't received notice, I know.
It's been actually longer than that.
Well, since they renewed it, yeah.
Yeah, we might be coming up on the, on the.
On the.
Okay.
I was just curious, you're meaning?
No. And for Mountain Green, I had asked if they heard anything about Whisper Ridge, because there's traffic going up and down there, but, I mean, they're just developing and they're just making progress, I guess. Okay. If there's nothing else, did you get Dustin's input?
Yep.
Okay, well, if you got those, then we'll take a motion on approving the minutes from the last meeting.
Still moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Still moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That is very subtle, that was a motion to adjourn. Thanks, everyone, for coming.